Okay, the clock says 5:58 and the chime says 6 o'clock. So we'll call this regular council meeting to order. Let me put my voice on here. Call this regular meeting of the city council to order December the 12th at 6:00 PM. I ask that you please turn your cell phones off and we will begin this evening with the invocation offered by Warren Ferguson, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Charlie McElvein. You may stand if you wish.
Please bow your head if you're so inclined. Awesome, God, help us to discern your presence and do this admit. Creator, God, give us the courage to accept your invitation to friendship with you and with our neighbors. May we find courage to address the great divisions among us and grant us the strength to follow your call to begin conversations that restore fellowship and overcome division. As we are baptized in your Holy Spirit, enable us to embody the good news with our words and deeds as you send us. God of chaos and hope, we remain hopeful in our work so that your glory may be revealed to people in times of abundance as well as in times of uncertainty. Holy Christ, draw near us today and uphold us in every circumstance that we may sing with the angels of your glory and mercy. Hear our prayers, O God, and bring peace to our world. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us started this evening, and thank you all for coming this Christmas season. We will go to item number one, which is announcements of community interest.
Stuart. Thank you, Mayor White. Thank everybody for being here tonight. I've got a couple of older items to discuss first because we didn't have a city council meeting, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. So there was a few things that we missed, but I just didn't want to let them pass without notice. The first one is the community retreat, which we held on November the 18th. We held that for public input. It was the first public input that we had on Curville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. And we had almost 140 people turn out at Tucker Hall to take part in planning for the future of Curville. And the input generated from that meeting is still being used in the ongoing planning process. Our subcommittees are meeting right now. And of course, the next meeting of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, which is open to the public, will be Tuesday, January 16th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. We had a great turnout that day, and we sure do appreciate all the input that we had. That same day, November 18th, we had the Holiday Glided Parade. It's, the city held it downtown. This year's event was the largest ever. We had 91 floats. We had a great turnout along Water Street and Earl Garrett to cheer the parade on. And of course, Santa Claus showed up at the end and lit the Christmas tree on the Courthouse Square. Great time, great colors. This is a wonderful event that we do every year. So much fun. And Santa was there, and then it didn't take him long. I just turned that off. There we go. Didn't take him long to show up in Curville again. He showed up at the library December 5th, where he listened to the Christmas wishes of approximately 100, I mean, excuse me, approximately 50 youngsters. This was another great event that's put on by our library. And I want to say, Laura Beck will sit over here, and she's trying to hide from us here because I know she doesn't like to be pointed out like that, but they do such a great job over there. So much fun. And finally, I want to point out tonight that we are, this is a, we're doing a soft rollout of a new electronic agenda system at city council meetings. And this system is going to offer an improved and streamlined way of producing city council meeting agendas. And city staff and city council have been very busy learning how to input agenda items into this system. Like I said, this is a soft opening. We may have a few glitches tonight, so if we do, please bear with us. Thank you very much.
And I believe Mr. McDaniel has an announcement?
Yeah, just real quickly, because it's kind of his debut tonight with several agenda items. I want to introduce Drew Paxton. Drew, can you stand? So Drew is our new executive director for Development Services, and he'll, he's overseeing planning and building inspection, code and fore and health. And he comes to us from the city of Lubbock, where he was the planning director over a fairly large department. And he has a background, his education is in architecture, and he also has coursework toward a civil engineering degree. So we're very pleased to have him now onboard, and he's been here all of one month, so he's jumping right in.
Yes, thank you. Glad to have you, Drew. Stuart, you didn't mention the Gingerbread House decorating, and Laura, isn't that Saturday?
I'll let Laura do that, because she loves to talk in public.
So the library this Saturday will be hosting our fourth annual Gingerbread House decorating event at 12:30 and 2:30. We invite everyone to come out and see the creations. We are full at this time for this event, but hopefully we'll have some great pictures to also put up on the website.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other council members?
I've got a couple of real quick ones. The first three are really wedding anniversary announcements that I feel obligated to mention because they're, they've been married longer than I've been alive.
You don't say things like that.
I just did. And one of them is my aunt and uncle, which you all are invited to the party. It's in DC, if you can get there on Saturday. But then EJ and Jay Amison live on Bluff Ridge. They've been married 63 years as of yesterday. And then Bob and Yvonne Helwig celebrated their 50th anniversary as well. And then one other Christmas sort of announcement is if you've got time on Thursday, Pastor Delway does his annual concert at Calvary Temple Church on the Loop this Thursday at 7:00 PM. That's all.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 3A, which is an update on the final terms of the general obligation refunding bond series 2017 and a presentation of the transaction summary. Ann?
Were you going to cover visitors first, Mayor? The visitors?
I'm sorry. Yes, I skipped you, Charlie, because there was only one. Item number two is the visitors, and hold that thought, Ann. Visitors and citizens forum. I have only one request to speak, and it is very important. Charlie McElvein.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to invite each of you to participate in our annual Hill Country District Junior Livestock Show Cowboy Breakfast. We have several new events this year. One, it is scheduled for January the 12th, 6:00 AM. One of the new things, we'll be moving from the courthouse to the youth event center. We'll be inside if it's extremely cold or raining, outside if the weather is pleasant. We are tying more youth into the project since it is a youth event. We'll have the junior ROTC presenting the colors. The TIBI culinary class will be assisting us with the project. And then the thing that is very important and certainly a factor for this body is that we want to invite each of you to participate in the cow chip toss contest for elected officials. Now, you may recall, there's been another entity here in the area that has won that contest the last several years, and love to see the county have an opportunity to reclaim that prestigious designation. So come prepared for cow chip tossing, and we'd love to have you. Stick around for breakfast, and we'll see you on January 12th.
Charlie, there's some titles you don't want to win.
How was it, can we bring our own cow chip?
I don't see why you couldn't.
Hmm, okay.
You've got one you've been practicing with.
It's got G.I. hats.
I've got one that's real heavy in the middle, too.
All right. Well, you know, I don't see why it wouldn't hurt the other entity if they claim has a ringer that's been involved, so there you go.
What about the goat milking? Is that not?
Goat milking will also be taking place, so if you'd like to do that, too.
No, we don't allow that. Liability insurance.
We'd love to have you, but we do have several businesses that'll be lined up for goat milking, and then we'll have the ring toss for children. So come out and have a good breakfast and a lot of fun with us.
Thank you. All the new employees get the goat milking. I'm just going to take that. Thank you very much, Charlie. Okay, now we'll go to item number 3A, which is our update from Ann.
Okay. I'll go ahead and introduce this item, Mayor and Council. So earlier this month, the council authorized a perimeter sale for the refunding or refinancing of several certificates of obligation. The idea is that we would call those that were eligible and do an advance call on those that we felt like that we could do a little bit better in our interest rate. So Ann presented to you at that time what she thought might be your estimated savings, and I think she's got some really good news to report to you this evening. So Ann, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be back before you again this evening. As Mr. McDaniel said, we went to, we were here before to talk about going to the market to put in place an advanced refunding. What I thought would be helpful before we actually get into the specifics is to talk a little bit about the market. If you may recall, when I was here last time, we talked about the House plan and the Senate plan for tax reform, and understood that based on the way that those documents were currently drafted, they were going to preclude certain types of transactions after December 31st of 2017 as an effective date, even if they don't get it passed till this summer. As a result of that, there's been a significant increase in the market. Just to put in perspective, what this chart shows you is really up until about last week, on average, we were seeing four to six billion a week municipal bonds all across the country. Last week, we saw 21 and a half billion, and the projections for this week are 20 billion. And I will tell you, coming into last week and knowing those numbers, I did have a little concern about supply and demand and how that might affect the results of this transaction. One of the things that's a very important part of our process is that we go and revisit with the rating agencies. And this is extremely important because they are an independent third-party review, an overview of what the city is doing. It's critical because investors look to the rating agencies to help them not only rate the entity, but to look for there to be a standard that is utilized across the country. The good news is that the rating was reaffirmed at the AA, and we thought we wanted to highlight a couple of comments that Standard and Poor's wrote in the rating report. First of all, their first comment to me when they called with the rating was very strong management and that you have strong financial policies and practices. And one of the things that they shared with me is that they saw that the policies and practices, the management for Curville, was really comparable to entities that have even a stronger rating. So I think that that speaks volumes about the city of Curville and the staff that you have. They talked about strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, strong liquidity, very strong liquidity, and strong debt and contingent liability position. And then your institutional framework, framework score was also strong. So congratulations again, as I said. This is an independent entity that's looking at cities, not just across Texas that they're benchmarking you against, but all across the country. And to have these be the highlight points that came out of the report, I'd like to just congratulate the city on having such a positive report and comments. And that also helps, I think, when we get further down the road, when we talk a little bit about the results of the sale. So when I was here before, we talked about projections. And at that time, we hoped that we would have gross savings of about 940,000, net present value savings of 1,011,000, and net present value benefit of 5.43%. Well, the actual savings that we have for your consideration, the gross savings are 1.168 million, so that's $229,000 more than our projection. When we look at the net present value savings, it was 1,070, or $53,000 more than we had projected. When we looked at the net present value benefit, it was 5.748, or 0.32% higher. And then we also were able to have negative arbitrage, which was less than we projected. On the next page, we show the sources and uses. We had been conservative in cost of issuance. We had been a little bit conservative in interest rates. I think I had mentioned at the time, we put in a 25 basis point cushion. Just, we felt like that was appropriate with everything going on, and though interest rates did go up, they did not go up to the level that we had put in for the cushion, so we still came out ahead of where we would have been. And it is interesting, in looking at the transactions that are pricing this week, we have observed that, I believe, really, again, because of the supply and demand, interest rates are up this week from where they were last week. So the timing, I think, worked very well. One of the things you'll notice, we put in here, we show what the coupons are, as well as the yields. And so if you go all the way out to 2030, the true yield that the investor is getting going out that far is only a 2.75%. You'll note that in a couple of the maturities, we have two yields. What we ended up doing on this transaction is because we were refunding several transactions that had different payment dates. Some had payment dates on February 15, and some had payment dates on 8/15. We structured this transaction to mirror what those amortization schedules were. So in some years, you have two principal payments, but it'll be doing exactly what you had been doing before. We broke this out because part of the bond issue refunded proceeds that were utilized for your utility system. And so we wanted to show in this slide how much of those savings were attributed specifically to the utility system, and about 696,950 of those gross savings. And you can see where we went into the amortization schedule and leveled that out a little bit to optimize not only the savings, but future debt service. And then we did the same thing on your tax-supported component of it, of which about 471,000 was attributed to the Avalarm tax. You'll note that most of the savings occur through 2022. Beginning in 2023, there's a natural drop in the amortization of the city's debt, so we felt like the savings on the front end were more critical than having savings on the back end. So just in summary, despite significant municipal volume, the, the actual transaction exceeded what we had presented and what we were hopeful in being able to accomplish. I think a very important part of this is the city's name. The city of Curville has traded very well. If you'll recall, in prior transactions, we have utilized a competitive sale, and Curville is the only city where I've done competitive sales, where we've had 10 and 12 different bidders. And so again, I believe it's just your name in the market, and when you see the rating report with the very strong and positive comments, that helps you significantly in the marketplace. We really would like to express our appreciation to all of your staff, but specifically Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Yarborough, Ms. Dozer. If, if you think about it, this transaction was put together in an extremely compressed time period. And in addition to all the stuff that they have to do on a regular basis, they help us with the disclosure document. They were helping us look at multiple different savings structures, the rating agency questions, they helped to provide, you know, all the information for that. Due diligence phone calls. There's so many things that had to be done in a very compressed timetable. They're extremely responsive and, again, a major success as to why this was so successful. McCall, Perkerson, Horton, Tom is not here, but he was here the last time. They were extremely helpful. We also wanted to highlight the underwriting syndicate. The underwriting syndicate was Raymond James, FTN, and Baird, and they were selected to be the underwriters on this transaction because each of those firms, when we went back and analyzed your competitive sales, each one of those firms had won a competitive sale for the city. So they really sharpened their pencil in a time when it's a competitive environment, felt like that was a good rationale for the basis for their selection. And we were very pleased. They pushed the scale. We were seeing a little bit of dip in the market, and they went out, I think, in a very aggressive way. There were some bonds that they had to underwrite, but they were willing to do that. Again, I think it's because of the name of Curville. And lastly, we just want to express our appreciation. We have been very honored and very fortunate to be a part of the city of Curville's team for many years, me in particular, and our team, all of our team. We just wanted to say thank you so much and appreciate being able to help you with this transaction. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
It's a wonderful report, and I do remember you when you were in pigtails. You're a big part, you're a big part of why this is a success. I just want to add my congratulations to all the staff for a job well done. It was a quick job, and I know Mr. McDaniel worked really hard, and so did the accounting department, so my thanks to all of you.
And Mr. McDaniel can clarify something I think you had told me before, but that one graph that talked about the water bag thing. So doing this is actually, prior to any new debt that we add, is actually taking us the water debt limit that we have self-imposed, correct? So we eliminated that sort of roadblock, if you will, that was going to happen, that was going to happen next year.
Right. So we, we do, we do have this spike that, that you all were facing. We all were facing the three-year spike where we had the K-Pub loan, principal payments kicking in on top of our existing debt. And so between this transit, these transactions on the refunding of the COs, and then along with K-Pub restructuring, which will come due next month, we do have capacity now well under the self-imposed 35% limit to proceed on along the lines of what we've been talking about in terms of TTHM and Legend.
Legion.
Yeah. Legion, Live Station. So we're now working on some scenarios for you all on what that might look like going forward. The other thing that it helps us with is we've also had some discussion about a bond election in 2019 without raising taxes. And so this helps us, give us a little more capacity to do, do that as well, if that's what the community chooses to do, or you all choose to do. So very good news for us all around, and appreciate the work of Ann and particularly our staff. Sandra and Amy did a fabulous job.
Any other questions or comments by council? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all of you.
Nice Christmas present. Merry Christmas. Okay, with that good report, now move to the consent agenda, which is items 4A through 4D. Do I have a motion on those?
Mayor, I'd like to discuss 4C.
All right. Any others? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve 4A, B, and D.
So moved.
And do we have a second? Second? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. So we will move to item number 4C.
Mayor, I was just curious on, how far does the easement have to be moved? We're abandoning an existing easement and replacing it with one to connect to adjoining tracks? Is that correct?
That is B for Mr. Hoppy.
It's correct. There was a slight adjustment of the easement area further to the east of this property, and so that easement had already been acquired, which is essentially what's being asked to be vacated tonight. It was, it starts essentially at the same place, it just has a curvature to it.
May I ask, while you're on this, does that have anything to do with the financial report and the expenses on the River Trail West this period?
No, ma'am. I don't think so.
No? Eight thousand? No? Okay. Doesn't have anything to do with this?
So the ends of the easement were already meeting? They're just a curve in it that we're changing?
The far western terminus of this easement piece within this track is the same. It's simply changed the curvature from what it was previously, when it had been acquired.
Was there, what's the reason for that?
The area that was designated for the trail within the former Burton property was pushed closer to the river area to finalize that acquisition. And so the, those properties adjacent to it, the two adjacent properties had to be relocated.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Can I answer my question? Thank you.
Any others? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 47-2017.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. 5A is a public hearing on resolution number 43-2017 granting a conditional use permit for an approximate 0.91 acre tract of land situated in the John Sheffield survey 121, abstract 291, located south of and adjacent to state 27. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. This is a conditional use permit for the property there on Junction Highway to go to a new auto parts store, which would be a retail trade one use as a conditional use in the Guadalupe River zoning district. An area of the location you're all familiar with.
Retail trade, I have limited marked in mine.
Excuse me. Yes, retail trade limited would be allowed. Retail trade one allows them to go up to the larger square footage that they are asking for.
I see.
Retail, retail trade limited is limited to
It is already permitted.
3,000 square feet. That's correct. The site plan of the property. So the uses by right, again, with that 3,000 foot, square foot limitation, would be bed and breakfast, multifamily, life care, education, public or institutional uses, offices, restaurants, and that limited retail trade there that you see at the bottom. As conditional uses opens up the retail trade up to 50,000 square feet, business services, personal services, bars, and funeral homes. And again, we are talking about a retail trade roughly 8,000 square foot for a new auto parts store. Went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 19th with four conditions of approval, that they provide their Phase One environmental assessment for the river, building elevations, dumpster screening to match the building, and that they prohibit any auto repair in the parking lot. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
May I ask one, Mayor? Yes, ma'am. What does Phase One environmental assessment mean?
That has to do with the environmental impact of the property to the river and the areas around it based on the floodplain.
Okay. Who does it?
I'd have, I would have to ask the consultant.
They pay for it. They have it done. They show us the answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what do you suppose is the reason that we originally limited buildings in this zone to 3,000 feet?
As far as the original intention, I'm not sure. The intention of the conditional use is to look at projects that don't fit that mold on a case-by-case basis.
Sure. Do you suppose that we had in mind that we just wanted a lot more green space between buildings and more of a suburban look? Or is there some other justification you can think of for why people would have done that? I'm not asking you to read their minds in the past, but
Right.
But I don't want to miss anything that maybe they had in mind that I haven't thought of.
I think the primary focus is protection of the river and enhancement of the river. Is the business corridor between the highway and the river going to be an asset to both the community and the river development? So the size limitation, depending upon the use, could have a factor in that.
Now, the footprint of their building can't go into the floodplain, right?
That is correct.
So there's going to be a lot of open space behind the building, between the back of the building and the river.
Yes.
Anyway.
Yes, the
Even at 8,000 feet?
Right. The building pad would have to be elevated out of the floodplain, and that the property itself is not in the regulated floodway of the river.
They have some mitigation involved.
And, and there will be some open space between the edge of the river and the beginning of their parking lot?
Yes.
Will it look kind of like the people next door? Starbucks?
Very likely.
The building itself is approximately the same size as Starbucks?
No.
The whole?
It's more, it's like the size of Fuddruckers.
The parking lot.
Yeah, right. Fuddruckers is another one that's over 3,000 feet, I think.
Yes. And this store would be about the size of the one at 701 Sidney Baker.
Which is how many?
That one's about 7,800 square feet.
But to be clear, the, this property and Fuddruckers are, there's actually a division of the zones there.
Oh, really?
I think, I'm asking, I think that's correct.
Ah.
I really just don't see as far as needs for more than 3,000 square feet.
Starbucks is, we're talking about the zoning here. Guadalupe River.
Just to, my name is Sabina, council. I'm on the, in the planning department for the city. The, so the immediately adjacent to the east is a pawn shop. To the west is the Starbucks. And then farther to the west of the Starbucks is, is the AT&amp;T building, and then to the west of that is the Fuddruckers building. To the west of that is a vacant lot that we, right now, are reviewing, a, a Golden Chick restaurant. Farther to the east of that is a, is a car wash, the fast, fast wash.
And are those all in the same zone?
Those are all in the GR district.
Okay.
There is some PD on the side as well.
PD, yeah.
I'm sorry, there is some PD to the west.
Right. It's on our first
Plan and zoning page. Yes.
Oh. I can't, I was trying to use my digital things. Oh, yeah. I can't read. I know, that's why I wrote the paper. It's on the first, it's on the planning and zoning, right after the first two pages of the introduction. The Guadalupe River is, this is Guadalupe River, south is Guadalupe River, east is Guadalupe River, west is PD, north is W6, which is the Walmart, I guess, across the way.
Yes.
That's the surrounding zoning.
I've got a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
On one of the plaits that we received, there's a flood easement. On one of the plaits that we received, there's a flood easement, can you describe what that is in place for?
I think I can. That flood easement is an old easement from the UGRA. Council has approved to abandon that flood easement on a case-by-case basis. I think you've had several in this area abandoned and then replaced by a River Trail easement along the riverfront.
Why did UGRA have the flood easement, do you know?
I do not.
You don't know?
When, when they built the dam, they had to actually purchase or acquire that property for flooding inundation on those properties, so.
For the lake?
Yes, ma'am. And so when they, when they built the dam and ostensibly built the lake, they acquired flood easements up and down the north side of the lake.
Is there a need for them at all anymore?
No, that's, that's what Drew was alluding to. Several years ago, council adopted a motion that, that vacated all of the flood easements, and so we've been doing that when the property owners have come in, and I think there's been three or four since I've been here that we've vacated.
So we just wait until something changes, and then at that time we vacate that and substitute the River Trail easement?
Yes, and, and since the time of the building of the lake, we've had FEMA maps and floodplain imposed and floodway, and so that's kind of taken over for the need for the flood easements.
Any other questions by council? If not, this calls for a public hearing, so we will move into a public hearing at 6:29, and I have several people who wish to speak. Molly Robb?
It's all right, I would like to go first. Molly's kind of with our design team. I'm Tim Giat with Estle Schneider and Associates. Molly's with me, she's the engineer for the project, she was here for the planning, the planning meeting with, with the city, and then I've also got Joey with O'Reilly, he's the regional manager, if there's questions too about how the store operates, or to be able to answer any questions that the city council might have. The, just to kind of give a little bit of history, we started working on this project in November of 2016, so we're a little over a year into this process, trying to get, get this site to move forward. When we started, we went through, there were a couple of staff changes, those things happened, that kind of led us to a longer path than probably normally takes to kind of get us to the point we're at. Part of the timeframe had to do with the fact that we are up against the river, and making sure that the, the city and city staff was comfortable with what we were do, what we had to do, and all the requirements, and making sure that we're meeting that, and we have. At this point in time, we have gone through the planning commission, we've gotten full approval, and the conditions that were put on us at the planning commission were fairly simple, and there weren't really any issues, and we had no issues with those. All the additional information they required, including the Phase One, we did go ahead and submit. That was done before Riley's even the purchase of property. To kind of answer your question, councilmen, a little bit differently, is the Phase One is to basically understand if the existing site has any sort of hazardous existing condition, so it's basically a historical analysis of the existing site. It, it doesn't have anything to do with future use of the site, it tells us whether it's safe for us to develop. Outside of that, I'm really just here to answer any questions, elaborate anymore. We were told there may be some additional questions from city council, but we've, the site is substantially similar to the projects around it. A lot of the sites around us have raised the building and dropped the parking lot. In our case, we're going to raise the entire site, just to basically allow us to get our, the delivery truck in and out, which does show up kind of after hours, so it's not during normal business hours. Driving up and down that street, we're, we're basically providing another retail store in a retail area, so it seems to be in substantial conformance with the, with what's around us.
Tim, did you know when you bought the property that it would be a conditional use for that size building?
I, I'm a representative for O'Reilly, so I wasn't part of the initial purchase, but when the project was presented to us, the answer is yes. The three thousand square foot and the zoning information was clear, but the conditional use was an option, and working with staff a year ago, that was an option that was viable, which is why we proceeded to this point.
To follow that up, if it was a three thousand square foot, it wouldn't be in O'Reilly's, right?
No, it, it wouldn't be a viable, we couldn't, basically a three thousand square foot building wouldn't allow us to hold enough product to make the store profitable, or even sustainable.
Any questions for him, or the engineer? If not, Bruce?
Bruce Strakey, 821 Earl Garrett. In the eleven years I've been here, one of the most common complaints I've heard in this city from people about, as I have helped many look at properties, is the lack of addressing the river, and that our buildings are built with their backs to the river. And if we look at the pawn shop to the west of this property, its back is to the river. But if we look at the newer properties, we look at Starbucks, which faces the river, if we look at AT&amp;T, which is perpendicular to the river, and Fuddruckers, which is perpendicular to the river with its facade, but has outdoor seating on the river, when we look at those buildings, we enjoy them more in the city. When we look at the things that we are trying to accomplish in the next thirty years, as we are putting together our comprehensive plan, the CUP process that we're looking at tonight offers us the perfect opportunity to make that building at least be perpendicular to the river, and not put its back to the river as the elevations suggest in the, in the packet that I reviewed this evening. And I, I beseech you, this is the number one complaint of citizens in this town, that our buildings do not address the river. And I, I'm not trying to talk about the use, and we could talk about all kinds of things about putting an auto parts store on the river, but let's just let the building be better addressing to the river and the desires of the residents of the city. Thank you very much.
Jim Level?
Hi, I'm Jim Level, that's L-E-A-V-E-L-L, and my home is at 2236 San Jacinto. Tonight, I just wanted to share a few facts I've learned in the last couple of days with the city council. I am honored to be on the River Corridor Subcommittee of the Comprehensive Plan, which I think the Comprehensive Plan is unbelievable inside, and city's doing a great job, and this company that the city hired is doing a great job, and the community is doing a great job, and I can't wait to see the end result. But as I was thinking about, since I'm on that committee, I was thinking, I wonder what the city thinks about this, what do the people think about this, what do I need to, how do, how can I best represent the city? And so I dusted off, oh, kind of an old, but kind of a little active Facebook page I have called Kerrville Buzz, and I just put a poll on it because I wanted to see what people would do. First of all, the response was kind of unbelievable, because of all the people that the poll reached, twelve percent responded and actually voted. And I'm not a Facebook expert, but I've talked to some people who are, and they say that's a pretty good response. Usually about one percent is good, and we got twelve percent. And before I give you the results of that, I want to say one thing about me personally in O'Reilly Auto Parts, I have absolutely nothing against O'Reilly Auto Parts, I'm not a auto self guy, and I have probably bought a windshield wiper from them or something. So as far as I know, they're a great company, in fact, I have a pretty good idea they're a great company, because they have five thousand stores in the US, and their market cap is over twenty billion, you don't get to that if you're not a pretty good store. The people who voted are, I couldn't be sure of this, but I can look and get a pretty good idea of who voted, and it's not the regular, same old suspects for the political stuff that happens. It was more of, from my opinion, a younger crowd, you know, people that might actually be around in 2050 when this plan is being done for. So what I want to do first is read you the actual post.
You've got four minutes.
Okay, I got, I'll read you the post real quick on what I posted, because when I hear a survey, I always want to know what the question was, not just the answers. So here's the actual post. Coming soon on the river, the Planning and Zoning Commission has approved the 7,500 square foot O'Reilly Auto Parts store to be built next door to Starbucks. The city council will consider it at Tuesday's meeting. Kerrville Buzz is confident that almost all residents agree that O'Reilly Auto Parts is an outstanding business, a great asset to the community, and we are grateful that they are expanding here. However, Kerrville Buzz would like your input. Is an auto parts store consistent with your vision of the river's future? As of around five o'clock tonight, we'd had 181 votes. One sixty-three said no, eighteen said yes, that's ninety percent did not see that as part of their vision of the future of the river. So I just want to share that with you, and you can do with that information as you please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have one more speaker request, Fred Henneke.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Fred Henneke, I am the attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Fong, who own the property on which Starbucks is located. First of all, I want to thank the Development Services Department, particularly Ms. Kunsel and Ms. Miller, they've been very cooperative, very professional, and very quick to react to the sometimes unreasonable requests that I made, so it was a pleasure to work with them, and I think the product shows itself. I want to comment on the environmental Phase One. I was very surprised to learn that that was not a requirement in the zoning for this particular tract. It was a condition that we asked for, Mr. and Mrs. Fong, from the planning and zoning, and it was, it was accepted, and O'Reilly's did provide a very clean Phase One, but the concept that a tract of land on the river could be developed without an environmental assessment is disturbing to me, particularly since I own property on the river, down river. And if you look at this site, if you look at the part that's closest to the highway, that's a fill. It's about eight, nine feet tall, and it's just had things placed there over the years. And our concern was, what's in there? And so I, I bring to the council's attention the fact that planning and zoning recognized the necessity for an environmental assessment, but that was not a requirement of development along the river. And I would suggest to you that that's a, a gap that needs to be addressed. I have no comments on the CUP per se. Again, planning and zoning was very receptive of our concerns, and have made them conditions, and we very much appreciate O'Reilly's cooperation in providing the environmental one, but I also want to associate myself, on behalf of the following, and myself, with Mr. Strakey's comments. This is an almost eight thousand square foot building on less than one acre of property, the bulk of which is in the floodplain, and is not part of the actual construction. You're going to have, from the river, I mean, from the, from the highway, you're going to have a parking lot, an access road on the Starbucks side that goes to the back, where the dumpster will be, and where the trucks will be parked. There'll be virtually no way you can see the river from the highway going by this, this development, this new building. I would suggest to you that eight thousand square feet on less than one acre, probably two-thirds of which is undevelopable, is a lot to pack into one location. And I would ask you to, to consider that in, in your deliberations, and perhaps going forward as you may determine to tweak any of the zoning requirements for property along the river. Again, thank you for your cooperation and listening, and my, my congratulations to you for the excellent Developmental Services Department that I had the opportunity to work with. Any questions?
Any questions for the attorneys?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henneke. I don't have any more speaker requests, so we will, unless there's questions by council, we'll enter into the regular session again at 6:43. So at this time, having heard the public comments and the presentation, I would either entertain some questions or a motion by council.
So this is where we discuss?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So my, my feelings would be basically this, I, I'm, I would welcome any business coming to Kerrville and wishing to develop here. I would, I would argue that the, based on everything we're hearing in the Comprehensive Plan and even before that, that the River Corridor is something we should be particularly careful of using and issuing variances or conditional uses and whatnot. And in this case, I, I would suggest that maybe not just turning the building on, on its side, I, I would say we consider not approving the conditional use just on its face, mostly because we're about to consider rezoning this area anyways, or maybe not rezoning it, but certainly consideration about what we'd like to see developed there. We're not asking them to do something that they didn't already know about, so we're not really changing the rules midstream, and I would just, I guess I'm just, I'd be voting to not support the conditional use.
Any other comments?
I won't support the conditional use, but I would support the three thousand square feet.
I, I will add that I'm a little, I was a little taken aback by that too, because I had understood that three thousand square foot could accommodate an O'Reilly's store. I thought, we talked about that, apologize if I misunderstood. I'm, I'm all about private property rights, and I hate that it gets to a place like this on a speculation. I did bring with me, and I'm just throwing these things out for thought, the page out of the current Comprehensive Plan, which I expect will be fairly similar when we finish our new one, but one of the goal 3.4 was preserve and enhance the character of the Guadalupe River, utilize the Guadalupe River Corridor as a resource for recreation, conservation, and visual appeal. And that's on page three dash six, there's other things listed if anybody wants to read about, there's a whole section on Guadalupe River Corridor. That's my statement. Anything else? Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I, I make a motion, we, I guess reject?
Deny?
No, deny, yeah. I lost track of where I was at. The, was it resolution forty-three dash two oh one seven?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, would you raise your hands? Motion carries five to zero. Hard decision. Item number five B is resolution number forty-six dash two oh one seven for a conditional use permit to convert an office complex into a three-plex multifamily housing unit. Could you describe that for us too, please, Mr. Paxton?
Yes, ma'am. This is an existing office building at 314 Clay Street, and they're requesting a conditional use permit to convert this to a multifamily. Uses by right in this district would be bed and breakfast, the single-family, custom manufacturing, personal services one and limited, professional offices, restaurant general and limited, and retail trade limited. As conditional uses in the transitional residential district, multiple family, education, secondary or college, primary education, life care development, and tourist or visitor recreational service. This is the site plan, with showing the entrance of Clay Street, there are eight parking spaces with one additional handicap space in the back. The floor plan showing the three apartment units. And there's a photo from the street. The planning commission did hear, have a public hearing and hear this on November sixteenth and recommended your approval, or recommended approval to you, excuse me.
This is a residential transition district?
That's correct.
Is it in central business?
No, it's in
RT is separate from that. It's not an overlay. There's no, I did drive through there. It's a nice building, and I'd rather go from that, from commercial to residential than the other. It does seem like plenty of parking in the back. There's no street front parking, but...
Correct.
For guests, but, or no, none in the front at all, but...
Just a curiosity question. When did it get built and open as businesses? Do we know?
I do not.
Does anybody have a clue? Ballpark.
It looks relatively new to me.
Yeah. Is it five years, or more than that?
The applicant's here.
Oh. Oh, okay.
I think it's a little over seven to be, some would go.
Yes, would you please identify yourself and answer the question? I'm sorry, but for the record.
I think it's a little over, around seven. I don't know exactly, but it's not very old. We've had six or, it might be seven years when we built it.
Did you give your name? Did you get it, your name, please?
My name is Jeremy Itz. I'm the owner of the building.
And so how much square footage is going to be in each one of those units?
I'm sorry?
How much square footage will end up in each one of those units?
I think it's on that thing, I think.
Yeah, there's, on page four, you should be able to figure that.
Pretend I'm the second grader and somebody tell me.
I think it's like 660 or something. I don't remember.
Okay, if that works.
So that's probably going to be a single couple.
Yeah, you couldn't have many more than that. You know, it's probably designed more for elderly, because it's not a big yard or something that we can, you know, that it's kind of private. It's already, the fences are around it and everything, so it's very fenced in. If you look at it, the fence goes all the way down the side and all the way around the back, so it's all fenced in from the street, so it's very, very well put together already, so.
And so it's conditional use because it's multi-family?
Multi-family instead of single-family.
And it's designed as it's going to be, that's gone through all of our checkpoints as far as it'll end up being approved as far as...
Right, right, yes, yes.
Okay.
So there's probably not going to be a lot of the renters who have multiple automobiles to park.
Automobiles, that's right. I'm sorry?
Probably not many of the renters will have multiple vehicles.
No, you couldn't have, I mean, it's, they're not really designed for a house full of children. I mean, not that we're having anything against children, but if it's one or two, but, you know, you're limited with vehicles and traffic in there, so.
They exceed the parking requirements.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, that was my only question.
I should have asked it that way.
I mean, we've had it for eight years, and we've had a little trouble trying to get office space in. It's been set in vacant for two years, so I figured it, you know, do something different to try to make some cash flow. My taxes keep coming, so.
And you're, you're from Fredericksburg, is that right?
I live in Fredericksburg, but I own electrical contracting business here under JD's Electric, so.
We appreciate all your tax dollars. You can move over anytime you'd like, as soon as we build housing. Okay, any more questions by council?
Mayor, I got, I got one. I'm curious, is there enough room to get two vehicles in that driveway, or just one is going to have to wait?
Wait? In the entrance and exit?
Is it a one-way?
Yeah, it's probably, it'd be tied two ways. It'd be one-way only.
Okay. Yeah.
They'll know each other real well. They're small.
Yeah.
Okay, if not, this calls for a public hearing, so we'll go into the public hearing at 6:52. I have no speaker request form. Did anybody wish to speak from the audience? If not, I will close the hearing at 6:52, and if there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion on Resolution Number 46-2017.
I'll make a move, motion that we approve, Resolution Number 46-2017.
Second. Have a motion as second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Itz. Okay, item number 6A, ordinance number 2018-02, adding a statement to Article 11-1-6, and I'll just let you explain this, Fred.
Thank you, ma'am. The Guadalupe District, the Central Business District, and the Gateway District are proposing an amendment to those districts to add the Language Design District. These zoning districts have some development requirements above and beyond the standard zoning districts to help protect those corridors, the gateways, the river, and of course, the downtown core. As part of Senate Bill 1004, Chapter 284 of the Local Government Code, this is tying into some of the small node, or small network nodes for small cell or wireless telecommunications facilities, however you'd like to call them, smaller cell towers in the right-of-way and the design requirements thereof. In these districts with some additional requirements, the state has allowed cities in their design manual process to call these districts out separately from the rest of the city. The cities may regulate with reasonable design and concealment in these special districts or historic districts in the city's right-of-way. So we're asking to designate the Guadalupe District, or Guadalupe River District, Central Business District, and Gateway District as the design required, design districts. As you can see there, kind of see there, the Guadalupe River District obviously runs along the river. The gateways are some key entry points to the city, and the Central Business District being the core of downtown.
Is, is there more than one gateway, or is it just 16?
No, it's, we're, we're some more light blue.
Doesn't it go 27? I'm not seeing it.
It's just one at 16.
Is it about 27, too?
It's just the one at 16 and I-10.
Yeah. Yeah, so those others are a little bit different color.
There's the Central Business District downtown. There's your Gateway District, is 16 and I-10, come down Sidney Baker. And the Guadalupe River District. September 21st, Planning and Zoning Commission held a discussion regarding this, continued into October, had their public hearing November 16th, and recommended it for council's approval. Next steps would be, coming in January, February 2018, a completion and approval, or adoption, excuse me, of the design manual to get to the specific requirements of how these small cell nodes would be placed in the right-of-way.
Is, is the picture, my page is 85, I think, sort of what we expect?
That is one example. There are many, and to say that any of them look the same is difficult. The state put some parameters generally from the state aspect of what they were allowed to be sized. Some cities have tightened that down a little bit, depending upon their right-of-way spaces, right-of-way locations, and again, even further with the design in historic districts.
So I was a little bit confused, because I think some of the things that I was observing on some of these polls, and again, the whole purpose of this for those out in the audience is to make all of these contraptions that attach to telephone poles not be so unsightly as you're driving in these business corridors. And so the legislature, although they require that we let them attach those, they also allow the municipalities to put some kind of design restrictions to try to help out with what it looks like. And the things I think I was looking at, I found out today, were not these small cell nodes. They were cables and other people's attachments.
Telephone communication.
Yes. And so we don't have anything we can do for those, I guess, legislatively.
Right. And some of these will have, you know, small transformers required for the electrical side of the, and electrical meters. Some have the arrays mounted at the top. It just depends on the different companies and their different technologies, how they arrange that. The design manual will help give them criteria within to fit those different pieces of their, of their equipment. And then, of course, the design districts and the historic districts, we can actually require much more beyond that, that they be more of a stealth in nature so that they blend in with the pole. You don't have the additional equipment attached to the side, and it's all basically internal.
And I see in 284, Chapter, it was also parks and residential areas that you can do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So that helped me out a lot there. We don't have to do anything legislatively. It's an automatic. My other, other question I had for you, just so everyone here would know that was answered, is that designating this a design district is not going to put any other restrictions on the people that are in that area?
Correct.
Other than what we're talking about with the small cell?
Correct.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton by council?
So if, on the road, we decide, you know, we got these un, these other districts that we're not calling design districts, at any time we, if we, we can?
No, the state offers particular criteria, so if we just wanted arbitrarily go into institutional, like the hospital district, we could not do that unless we made a special case for, we were even talking about it today, about PUDs and trying to make a special case for those, but the law is pretty clear. It's about those areas that the city has gone an extra mile in terms of designating a higher bar in terms of the aesthetics. Now, you could, what you could do is you could go in and do overlay districts on top of your existing zoning to create special district that would be of that nature in different parts of the city, and then designate those as a design district.
That's what I mean. So we, we could make that decision. I mean, that's obviously more than we want to deal with, but we could, we, we're not giving up that ability to make that choice later.
That's correct.
In another way.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay.
And you're automatically covered in residential info, so. Yes, ma'am?
I'll move approval.
Oh, we have to have a public hearing?
We're still on public hearing.
We, we didn't have the public hearing yet, did we? So we'll now, if there's no more questions, call a public hearing at 7:00 PM. I have no one designated to speak. Would anyone like to speak or ask a question? If not, we'll move out of our public hearing at 7:00 PM. And now I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of ordinance 2018-02.
On the first reading? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Item number 7A is ordinance number 2018-01, amending Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by amending Section 10-3, licensing requirements and fees, by reducing the applicable fee for a brew pub license containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for an effective date ordering publication and providing other matters related to the subject. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So our ordinance related to the fees charged for alcohol beverage facilities or institutions, restaurants, so forth, dates back to the 1960s. And there's a clause in our ordinance that says we'll charge half of what the state charges, because that's the maximum that we can charge. So over time, the state has imposed a fee that has, has grown, and for particular businesses is a little bit, it's not equal to what you would, would think for, for a restaurant. So for example, we've got a brew pub in town that their fee would be $1,500, but you have a restaurant like, say, grape juice that would be in the order of $175. And so this is just to kind of equal the playing field and, and just say that both of them would be the same. And so we would lower our fee for brew pubs, not only for our existing brew pub, but also for those that might come along. And we do have one that is under the process of permitting now, an additional one. So you'd have two readings of this ordinance. This is just the first reading, and all it does is amend the fee. Now, this is, fee is not a fee for service. It's basically a surcharge, and we sent them a bill, and so there's not any inspection or follow-up. The state does all that, doesn't change any of the regulations that the state might have. We do food service permits, but that's different from this, this particular fee. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You answered all those ahead.
I just want, we, we talked about in, in the ordinance, it says, and similar businesses, do we, do we have an idea what similar ones are?
If there were another distillery, kind of where they were doing retail onsite, that type of thing.
Is it just the one brew pub in town we have now?
There is. In fact, the owner is here tonight. We welcome him to be here, Jeremy Wathers.
Is this changing the fee from 700 to 175? Is that?
110, 1500 to 175.
Okay, 1500.
Okay, any other questions by council? Have no speaker request form?
150? I'm sorry, it's 150.
150 is what it will be changed to?
Yes.
Do I hear 150? That's what he's doing.
Yeah, 150 is a good number.
Yeah.
And again, it isn't for anything that we necessarily have to go out and do, so like Mr. McDaniel said, it's relatively just a charge, so. I don't know if it was by request, but it's being recommended. So if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2018-01.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. 7B is ordinance Number 2018-03, amending Chapter 66, Library of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by amending Article 2, Library Advisory Board, to change the composition of the Library Advisory Board to allow Kerr County to make an appointment containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause and providing other matters related to this subject. Mr. McDaniel, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, so consistent with our new and a local agreement with Kerr County, we are creating a position on the library board designated for Kerr County representation. We have a total of five board members on this board, so that would mean that four would be appointed by the city and one by Kerr County. This, your January agenda then will be coming back to you at second reading to ask you to go ahead and make your appointments to this board, because we do have some vacancies on the city side, not just the one position that the county is appointing as well.
Do we have any applications, Ms. Craig, yet?
For the library?
For the library board? Okay, some reappointments. Okay. I think we're all familiar with why this is here. Any questions, though, by council? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2018-03.
So moved. There you go.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero.
Mayor?
Yes, you need to recuse?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Don't eat all the cookies.
Don't steal the cake.
Okay. Ordinance Number 2017-21, annexing an approximate 7.95-acre tract of land into the city of Kerrville, Texas. Said property generally located south of and adjacent to State Highway 27 East and west of Calvin Ranch Road East. Said property being out of the F. Rodriguez Survey Number 72, abstract Number 280, being located adjacent to the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, more commonly known as 5263 Highway 27 East. Further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annexed, and establishing the zoning for the property annexed. And council, this is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Were there any questions? No changes, I presume?
No changes.
Any questions stand by council? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2017-21 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
With the approved ordinance 2017-21.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero, and bring Mr. Vogel back in, please. Okay. We have items Number 9A, Council, 9C, and 11B slated if you desire for executive session, so I just wanted to point that out before we start on the next portion. Do I have a motion to do so?
Mayor, I'd like to hold 9C out of executive session, please.
If there's no motion to put it in executive session, we don't need that. So, okay, we want them all in, out, okay, in open session. Then let's move on to item number, well, we can't do Number 9A. It's got to go into, I'll move that that goes into executive session, because it's salary and personnel.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Is that a yes? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, let's move to item Number 9B, which is administrative services contract between the City of Kerrville, Texas and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation amount of $83,300. Mr. Hoppy? contract between the city of Kerrville, Texas and the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation amount of $83,300, Mr. Hoppy?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight, you have the EIC Administrative Services Contract. This contract is between the city and the EIC and basically includes services for project management, engineering, financial, legal and administrative support provided by city staff to the EIC throughout the year. The EIC compensates the city $100,000 in the totality of the contract for those services throughout the fiscal year. There was an item that was asked by the EIC to be included, this was approved within both the EIC and the city budget. The EIC had requested a text amendment within the contract regarding legal services and moved to approve a 60-day interim contract. That contract was approved by the city council in late October timeframe, and revisions were made to the more permanent or revised contract, which is what you have before you tonight. This basically takes it from the remainder of that 60-day contract at the end, which expires at the end of December and takes it through the fiscal year, and also takes the balance, which is the 83,300, the balance in addition to the 16,700, which totals that $100,000 amount. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hoppy or anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question.
Thanks.
For Hayes. It says where conflicts exist, what conflicts are we expecting? Or what's an example of a conflict that would exist?
You, you know, this is what I described to the EIC because I was asked the same question, so if, if I knew based on a discussion from council that you all weren't supportive of a contract or a project, and they said, well, we want to go forward with the project, will you draft an agreement? You know, at that point, I would say, well, there seems to be a conflict between council and EIC, and I would respectively withdraw from representation or doing any legal work for them. I think that's as simple as I can, I mean, I think there's, there's others, but I think that's as simple, that's the most likely one I foresee.
But even in that one, you don't actually, or maybe you would, so there's a question. Would you actually be withdrawing, or you would just bring up the issue to EIC, at which point they, they get to determine by this contract whether they care about that?
Yes, right, yeah, I, I would just.
You're not actively withdrawing, you're just bringing it up to them in that scenario.
Would a case like that cost $50,000 to hire outside counsel?
To, to draw up a contract, probably no, no.
That's a good question, because we, we were given a breakdown from the finance department and the, I guess, I don't know if it was an estimate or if these were actual numbers, that we apportioned to the legal part of this contract, which was about $11,000.
It's an estimate.
Yes, it's an estimate, and of course, we understand it could change. I guess the confusion that I've had about this all along is, number one, how would you know if it was a project that council didn't, wasn't in favor of?
Mayor, that, that's happened before, just during, like, budget process, you know, you all start your budget process in June, and it might come to a point where the EIC, say in August or September, says, hey, we want to pick up this project, and, you know, it's happened before, and staff has to remind EIC or inform EIC, hey, this is not a priority for city council. And at that point, in my experience, EIC has just dropped that project. Now, in the case, in addressing Mr. Vogel's question, if they said, well, we want to go forward, you know, at that point, I would say, well, you know, I'm not going to do any more legal work for you for this.
So that's what it would be if, if the EIC wanted to, to go forward with a project that you in economic discussions knew that council may not be interested in, but they wanted to go forward anyway, they would hire legal services? What kind of legal services?
To draw up a contract, to draw up a contract.
Well, I mean, they would present a contract that they knew council wasn't interested in seeing?
I, I'm being asked hypotheticals, and that's, that's, you know, I was asked about the conflict of interest, and that, to me, that is the probably, the most likely example of, of a conflict of interest that, that might arise.
The reason I'm asking is that's, it's taxpayer money, you know, on both ends, so we first had the thought that it would be to sue somehow if the council and EIC didn't agree, EIC would need legal funds to sue, which you answered that they could, but it had not ever happened here. To me, if that's the case, I don't, I don't understand why we would give them $50,000 to sue and use taxpayers' money on both ends, EIC and city council, because we'd have to have, you know, representation.
If we pass this administrative contract, does it obligate the EIC to use $50,000 for outside legal services?
Oh, no.
Of course not. And, and all of these things are the remotest of remote possibilities, but it doesn't seem worth vetoing something that's been through their process and they'd like to have it looked this way this year. Not, we hope by next year, we've regained their trust. They've never wanted us before, have they?
No, huh, no, and.
Although the contract always said that there was no, am I not right, Mr. Hayes, it's always said that they, that it was possible for them to hire outside legal counsel.
Yes, I went back to, I think, 2000, and that provision was in their contract, right?
To me, this is coming from some unfortunate misunderstandings among members of the EIC, and Lee said soon as amended.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear to everybody, because it's been really muddy, and we certainly wouldn't look for, to a situation where an appointed board would sue a governing body when that governing body has, as Mr. Brady pointed out, you know, by state law, ultimate control over what happens. So, you know, and if, and if, just for clarity, for those that may be still having questions, in project funds, there's money for EIC to hire special legal services, Mr. Hayes and I covered that, which would necessitate this. So the, the cost of preparing an administrative services agreement, which perhaps could be a separation of interest if this very agreement were looking at, somebody wanted to hire somebody else to draw it up besides city council, Mr. Hayes, fine, it's never been an issue before, but even at that, it would just be, what, several hundred dollars probably, it's a two or three-page document. So I'm with you, I understand that it's probably not going to mean anything, I just want the facts to be out there when we do.
I would agree, I will, I will take one exception to something Summerlin said, though. I don't believe that I'm in a position right now where I'm trying to regain somebody's trust. I don't believe that's what we're doing here, and I don't think, that's, I don't believe that's what's going on here, it's not.
Well, that doesn't have to be part of the motion.
Oh, yeah.
That can just be my own personal opinion, I claim it. Let's, I'll, I'll move adoption.
So with that, there's a, I would make one last comment, and then I'll call for the vote, but since all of EIC voted for it, maybe they had a reason for it, I don't look to this ever to have to come to fruition, so. Now, any other questions or comments by council, let's see, I do have a speaker request form, and that would be Robert Naaman.
Robert Naaman, 1800 Glen Road, member of the Economic Improvement Corporation. I agree with Ms. Summerlin pretty much, but I, I have to say that this is kind of a dog ate your homework story. On the day, the 27th of November, when I went to the EIC meeting, I had a low-grade fever. Had not actually studied the packet online as closely as I should have. Was expecting to see a hard copy as we usually get at the meetings, but it wasn't available. Did have 101 and a half temperature when I got home from the meeting, so I claimed delirium. My, I don't object, I, I think it's, it's not necessary to have this in there, but it doesn't bother me when I voted for it, because we've spent six months voting on things that really didn't have a whole lot to do with economic development, which, you know, raises the question why I'm on the Economic Improvement Corporation. But I would say that, that does kind of raise a question, is if it ever had to be used, you know, what lawyer do we hire? Is there a conflict there? How much money is 50, you know, the, the dollar amount seems a little bit too high or maybe too low. But ultimately, as I, as we've discussed with, with Mr. Hayes, and as was, I've discussed with the State Comptroller's Department, the city council can, can deny any project that the EIC approves at any time. So it's almost a moot point, and it's very rare that an economic development corporation has sued the city, and it's my understanding that one of the few times it could happen would be, as Mr. Hayes maybe have described, as if there was a contract that we drew up between the city and the EIC that for whatever reason, both parties didn't agree to, which begs the question, you still have one person representing both parties now. But other than that, I don't think any harm's going to be done by voting for this, and I'm trying to get along with everybody, thank you.
Well, we're just glad you feel better and you're not delirious this evening.
I don't know if he claimed that, he just, he was delirious then, he didn't say anything about today.
Again, I could see that if Mr. Hayes had some property or something, and he was affected differently economically by maybe some decision he made or with the administrative services, I think $50,000 is over and above anything that would ever be spent, but having said that, no more questions?
I move adoption.
Okay, we have motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, and we decided to keep nine C in open session? Nine C is review and possible action concerning Economic Improvement Corporation Board appointments. And Mr. Brady had called about this at one time and wanted to hold possibly a special meeting, we decided to go ahead and put it on here. I guess because of some of the issues that arose in the item we just mentioned and the meetings that involved the discussion, I had some concern, you know, about some of the language and some of the conversation that went back and forth, and perhaps, Mr. Brady, it'd be better to speak to that, because you were there and a part of it.
I'll, I'll just describe what my concerns were, basically, just everybody, I mean, I think everybody does understand this, but you got city council and you got an EIC board, EIC board is essentially accountable to the city council, and city council is accountable to the voters. And just like any other city board, I would expect that most people on those boards, while they can differ in opinions personally and can even campaign however they want, up here from the dais, I would expect the, the boards to not basically antagonize or disparage, really, city council in particular, and I would say any, you know, city, I mean, they're basically working for a city. You know, all, everybody up here, everybody on the boards are serving the citizens, but the boards are working for the city, and in particular, the issues that I ran into were some of the people on EIC, and it's not pleasant to single somebody out, but I attempted to have conversations with them beforehand, and I was unable to. But Mr. Wilson on EIC has, has been basically escalating his discouraging remarks from his position on EIC, at least since that joint EIC-KEDC meeting that occurred in whatever it was, September. And the, from my standpoint, and again, that's, that's my standpoint, but they've been pretty defiant, pretty, pretty clear that maybe he doesn't really wish to be on, on EIC. I don't know if people would like me to recount the, the words, I don't know if that clears it up for people or if it's better just to say that the comments themselves were directed at council, basically to the effect of, at the, at the joint meeting, it was, it, EIC, well, he actually said the city doesn't know how to do economic development, nobody really believes that they can do economic development, well, when you're sitting on the economic development board of the city, that seems like an odd statement to make, but, but then at the EIC meeting, the way the, the budget debate occurred, which, without bringing everybody up to speed on the specifics, just, there was a disagreement on what council oversight meant. Basically, he was pretty defiantly saying, well, city council didn't really turn that down, did they? Well, they did, they in fact didn't pass it, which is the same as turning it down. And then at that most recent meeting about the admin, administration, admin, admin services contract, he was the one who most clearly stated that he anticipates conflict coming with council, and when asked what that would be, it wasn't something about a, a contract where the city attorney has to back off, it was, it was conflict with city council. And to express those feelings publicly right there at EIC meeting, I, I don't know how we move forward with that. I mean, there are other things that happened from other people that, you know, one, one, one place I would say, we, you turn the other cheek and, you know, talk a person off the ledge so that it's not going that way. Sometimes it doesn't seem like that's the way it wants to go, and when I'm trying to contact him and he didn't really want to respond, didn't want to talk with me, you know, I don't know that I have much option other than to come here, and my intention was to recommend, you know, asking, I was going to ask him to resign, but I was unable to do so, so I would be bringing this up to ask that we consider that option.
Has he, has he continued to be present when meetings are called, or does he attend the meetings, I guess that's my question?
He attends the meetings, but all the way up until the most, so, so really, the last three meetings, there's been some comment made similar to what I described.
Well, he, he has a right to make a comment.
He does.
Whether, whether you agree with it or not, I mean, you have every right to disagree with it and bring that air.
Right.
If he quits coming to the meetings, then I would say that would be an appropriate reason to ask him to resign.
Okay, well, to be, to be clear, I'm not, I'm not talking about actually disagreeing on, say, a policy choice or something like that. We're, we're talking more about disparaging your authorizing unit, because that's really what it is.
Yeah.
And, and that is a different thing, I don't expect anybody to agree with me on, you know, we have a vote, he votes one way, I vote the other, you know, whatever.
Yeah, well.
Did you have a comment, are you through, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, I'm, I'm through for now.
Okay.
Are, are we contemplating, can, can we be contemplating making it another qualification to serve on our boards and committees that you agree with the majority of the city council at any given time?
Oh, absolutely.
Do I get to respond to that?
Yeah.
Okay, no, we're not, we're not making that, and I think, as I explained.
That's a real slippery slope.
You're right, and so I'm not even stepping on the slope, as I explained to Mr. Ferguson, I'm not talking about policy decisions. He does not have to agree with the votes, he, he can publicly campaign against me running on council, that's not the issue. The issue comes down to that the body of EIC, individual or as a group, is not to be essentially belittling their authorizing unit as a body, not as an individual, because he did not specifically describe me. He said city council, and that's what he did over and over, because.
I listened to those videos, and I didn't see anything that disturbed me or made me think that he was disparaging or antagonizing the city council. The, particularly the comment that he made about administrative, the administrative agreement and anticipating conflict with the council, he actually walked that back, denied that that was what he meant.
No, he denied that's what he said.
Well.
No, there's a difference. He understood that what he said would have been wrong, and he denied saying it.
Let's, let's, let's do this, let's just make a, a statement about our beliefs, I think we all listened to, did everyone listen to those meetings?
They did.
The EIC, okay, I know I did, and I think.
Well, I, I listened to one or two, depending on which one you're talking about.
Well, there were only two, and then we had a joint meeting.
Okay, well, I must, I missed one, I guess I missed the joint meeting.
Well, it was private, that's why it was the KEDC, EIC. That's why it was the KEDC, EIC.
Okay. Then I must have missed one of the public ones.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Okay. Do you have a comment, Mr. Vogel? And then I, I think I'm going to let, Peggy McKay, did you want to speak or did you, did you still want to speak to this?
Are y'all thinking?
No, I'm going to have a statement, but you're welcome to say now or later. Okay. I, I don't want to take this all night because I don't think it's healthy to do. I, I will just say that I was very disappointed in, in reviewing those meetings at the perceived hostility. And I, I understand and I agree with Ms. Summerlin that we will have disagreements, and I have for two and a half years at times, with people on council and perhaps other boards. That's not unusual. That happens. I do think it steps over the line when people threaten what I contemplate to be a, a threat of a lawsuit. And I think that's what precipitated the change in the administrative services contract. But when you say over and over, not just once, in the heat of a moment, I can understand that even, that you anticipate conflict with your governing body, that, that, that is disappointing to me. And more than disappointing, I, I just don't see a, a good, healthy, working relationship there. So, I agree with Mr. Burdi that probably be more healthy to just replace that one position there and hope that that's the end of that kind of discussion and hostility. Ms. McKay, did you want to speak? Okay.
I have another question, Mayor. What, what exactly, to what extent has the member actually threatened a lawsuit?
I think you...
What are the words?
I anticipate conflict.
And, and, and we're, we're elevating that to being, I anticipate filing a lawsuit.
Yes.
What's the difference between that and Mr. Burdi's pointing out that he thought the Open Meetings Act had been violated and that that was grounds for action by the district attorney? What's the difference?
If, if there's action taken, it's not $50,000.
No, no, let me answer that because that's not what I said.
But let's, let's not get into something that's not on the agenda.
No, but that's the difference. The difference between those two is one was trying to protect the body that I was a member of, which was EIC, and the other is actually attacking the authorizing unit. I wasn't attacking anybody. I was actually presenting a cautionary tale or whatever you want to call it to something that the body was taking.
To anticipate conflict is not to attack. Conflict doesn't have to mean a lawsuit. It could mean an argument, and we got lots of arguments.
I understand, but if this was followed by a $50,000 line revision for outside legal services in case of a conflict, so you have to, it's pretty easy to read between the lines. And actually, we have an option. The reason I stated it this way on the agenda, which I presume is what you anticipated to, for me to do, Mr. Burdi, was we have the option by state law to appoint, disappoint, reprove, sanction. There's a number of different things that you can do. And that's why I didn't list anything specific on here. We're having this discussion because I have no idea what council would desire to do. We can do nothing. So, we are at a point to...
What's, why the rush? And in June, he comes up for reappointment anyway.
I, I would think...
Why does this have to be done now?
In, in my opinion, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, there are ongoing meetings and decisions that have to be made, and I just don't think that's a healthy situation. That would be my intent.
Why don't we, why don't we say to ourselves, "Look, there have been a couple of contentious things," and I think it's only fair to point out that some of this followed the council's decision to renegotiate the contract with my case. And natural fear on the part of the EIC that, that the majority of the council might have in mind appointing an attorney who changed radically the interpretation of what the EIC can, can do. If that, if that is accepted, that, that there have been some contentious issues before the EIC in the last couple of months, why wouldn't we wait and see if attitudes can be elevated at the next few meetings?
Perhaps that's what...
By everyone.
I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer real succinctly. This isn't a rush. The KEDC meeting was September 9th, I think, or September 7th. And the, the behavior that you're waiting around for is what we've been doing. So, since September, September, October, November, and now we're into December, that's not a rush.
But I've watched the videos, and I don't see any behavior. I see some words. I don't see any behavior.
That's okay. You, you can do that. But to finish the quote, "We anticipate conflict with the city in the future, so let's get that on the table. We expect that, and we want protection, and we want it now."
And they got it.
Bam.
Done.
And so, basically, no, not, that's okay. You're entitled to that. That's basically where we're at. So...
That's where we're at.
That's my position, and, and I'd like to say, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I know you're supposed to have the last word, but I've got to say this. I think this has an incredible chilling effect on every board and commission in this city, every volunteer. And we have dozens of good citizens who give their time, their energy, their sleep, their outside time, with, without even getting their expenses paid. And to act like we are going to, they are at risk of being replaced if they disagree with somebody, with the council representative or the, somebody who represents the opinion of somebody on the council is just shocking to me, undemocratic, crazy.
Okay? Anybody else? I would entertain a motion if there is one, if this...
I would, I would make a motion that we remove Mr. Wilson from the EIC board and, and to be very clear, not for the reasons that just stated. That's my motion.
Have you got a replacement in mind, or are we just going to have a...
Wait, he made a motion, and so, is that the end of your motion? Or would you like to add anything to that or...
My, my intention would not be to replace it tonight. My intention would be, I'll just add it to the motion. My intention would be, I'm making a motion to replace Mr. Wilson, basically vacating his seat and suggesting that we open up for applications and as quickly as possible, ideally before the next EIC meeting, have the position replaced. That's my motion.
Right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second?
Do we have, do we have somebody in mind, George?
I think we've had our discussion. We have a motion.
I'm saying what I said is pretty clear.
And, and actually, by procedural rules, we are not to question intent. We are just to talk facts and make a motion. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? Motion carries three to two. Okay.
Wait, to clarify, what, how, how do we...
We, we can do that for, if you, if you have a suggestion in a future agenda. Is that what you want to do?
Okay. That'll...
Isn't she like, in her comments?
Yes, ma'am. We've already moved on here in the vote. Item number 11 would be appointments to the Food Service Board. Ms. Craig?
We have three terms that expire December 1st, and we have three applications from persons who meet the minimum qualifications. The interview team were council members Vogel and Ferguson.
And I think I can speak for, if now we agreed those three would be just a point two.
Yes, sir. Correct.
So, I move their appointment.
I'll second.
Do we need to read the names?
That would be helpful.
Okay. If you, if you could, Mr. Ferguson, read their names in your motion.
Wait a minute, I've got to find them.
Here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The names are Gary Amad Jr., Ruben Molina, and Martina Ortega.
Did you get that? Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in fa, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Item number 11B is appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Craig?
We have two regular positions and one alternate position that are due to expire January 1st, 2018. That's difficult to say, 2018. We have four applications on file from persons who meet the qualifications for this board. The interview team were council members Burdi and Ferguson.
Did the interview team have any remarks or recommendations? Mr. Ferguson, did you all, did the interview team have any remarks or recommendations?
No, I, I don't. Do you, George? We, we really, I, as far as it goes, unfortunately, I didn't see this in time to, to conduct any kind of discussion with the applicants. So, I'm not prepared. And I guess I would like to ask that we postpone it for, and put it back on the agenda for our next meeting.
Well, the only problem with that is I think we wouldn't have a quorum. They expire. Am I, am I right?
Well, but, but don't the, the positions carry over until they're replaced, right?
Oh, okay, sir. Okay.
I, I would, I would concur with that. That, that sounds like a good idea.
So, did you make it a motion to defer?
Yes, I made that motion. You heard it correctly.
Okay. Is there a second? Did you second?
I'll second, though.
All right. So, a motion and a second to defer until they have an opportunity to interview. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero.
So, we'll be expecting to see that on the first January meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And, and we ought to do something about it before then.
Well, I've, I've actually done something, but I haven't called all of them. So, I'm ahead of you.
You're a step ahead of me.
I actually called the chairman, Bob Waller. And he said he thought that the Planning and Zoning Commission was working very well as presently constituted. Three of these people have already been on planning and zoning and have another term legally before them, so...
It may work out.
He said it was working out beautifully.
It may work out just well, too, because I think one of these applicants is up for another board appointment tomorrow morning, and he may know something there for airport board. So, that may, that may work out just well. So, items for future agenda? Did, did you say you wanted to do something on there?
Oh, yeah. So, how do I do this? Basically, I guess we just immediately open applications in, so the, the next EIC meeting is Monday.
It's Monday.
Right?
Yes, sir. December 18th.
So, is there, is there a way, and I'd have to check with my wife, to be honest with you, because that's her birthday, but is there a way to do a, a special meeting on Monday to make the appointment if we, you know, and work our way back on this stuff? Is that even possible?
You have time legally. You have, it would give you about two days to receive applications, about two days.
Okay, so...
Unless you have a handpicked member, I don't see how it would work.
Yeah, I know.
The first week of January or something like that.
Pin that tail on the donkey.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just comment that you don't have a lot of heavy business on the EIC agenda.
Are, are we expected to make a call?
No, you, you might be reviewing a draft agreement.
Okay, but we won't be making a vote, really?
But you're not going to be asked to vote.
Okay. All right. In that case, then it doesn't have to be, then I guess we can just open up applications and close them down.
Is there another EIC meeting before next council meeting?
No, ma'am. It will be after the January 9th.
Okay, so, January 9th?
So, we'll be targeting that for our appointment of it.
Is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, which means we got to close the applications when? Working back from the 9th.
Friday morning?
Wednesday before.
Wednesday before.
The Wednesday before. So, whatever that date is, I guess the future thing is open the applications up to end on that day.
Okay. Okay, then, then we don't need anything there, and PNC is covered. Any other items for a future agenda? All right. If there are none, then I think that we need to go into executive session to discuss item number 9A, which is the reappointment of municipal court judges in Patrick McGuire and Mark Przylowski. So, at 7:42, we will adjourn to under...
Are we doing that other one? Are we doing two? Two things?
Or can you leave?
Did you want to defer that? Would you like to do that?
It's up to the council. I'm ready if you are.
Okay.
I don't think it'll take long. I would just go ahead and do it.
Okay, then...
So, we got to make a motion to go into executive session for, what are we doing?
9A?
9A, which is what rule? 551074, and then for 13D, which, 551074? Okay. That's my motion.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. So, at 7:43, we will go into executive session. Let the record show, we are back in regular session at 8:24 PM. There was no action taken in executive session. At this point, I will ask for a motion, if any, on item number 14, as action on items discussed in executive session.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we reappoint judges Patrick McGuire and Mark Przylowski on terms as discussed and authorize their personnel action forms accordingly, and that we register a strong vote of confidence in our city manager and also authorize a personnel action form as discussed for him.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries five to zero. And at that point, I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and we will dismiss at 8:25.